Okay, we'd like to open the regular meeting number seven. Mahoney County Commissioners, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Everyone, please stand for the pledge and please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to everybody, please take a moment of silence. Our colleague Anthony Trafficante is not here with us this morning. We just found out that his mom passed yesterday evening. It's, you know, politics are politics. The things that we deal with on a daily basis, you know, can never change who we are as people and how we feel, especially about our friend and colleagues, family and his mother. And Anthony's mother was his everything. You know, his dad passed eight years ago. His mom took care of him for fifty-six years. And for the last eight, Anthony, you know, his mom's life revolved around Anthony. And he's devastated as any of us would be. You know, at the end of the day, all the guys in here were all mommy's boys. You know, and it's so difficult to lose your mom. I know it happened a few years back for myself. And our thoughts and prayers go out to Anthony Trafficante and Mrs. T. I always called her Mrs. T. She was a sweetheart. She was a phenomenal person. And she just, you know, was the light of his life and a lot of other people around her. So let's take it a moment of silence for Mrs. Trafficante. Thank you. Where's O'Shaughnessy? See around her. There he is in the middle. Public comments? If you have anybody who would like to address the board, we ask them to come up in three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm so devastated to hear this news. I'm a mama's boy too. So I understand exactly what you're talking about in regards to Commissioner Trafficante. And I do ask that God receive her soul into His arms. I wanted to rise, Mr. Chairman, and-
Would you give us your name and address so that they can filter you into the record?
Please forgive me, I'm just a little thrown off here, so.
Yeah.
My name is the Honorable Kevin A. Tarpley the First. I'm the founder, president, and executive director of the Young Sound Lifeguard Academy. That title is not the important one. The most important one is given to me by the young people, it's coach. So I'm here on their behalf to thank you all for the significant investment that you're making through the ARP funds to the Young Sound Lifeguard Academy. Former Councilman Ellis informed me to talk to Commissioner Trafficante about what we're trying to do here in Mahoney County and in Mahoney Valley. And he then approached former Chairperson Rigetti. And we had a conversation about what we were trying to do here. And we are training young people to be lifeguards, but that's not the end all be all. This is about twenty, thirty, forty years from now when they retire. This is just a foundation for launching into a career. On April fourth, we are going to have a meeting at our offices, which you all help make possible once again, which I'm very proud of. Because as I travel the country, I'll be able to say to county commissioners from Mahoney County, help make this possible. We're going to have a meeting and we've invited forty-five individuals from the county parks, all the park directors. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources is planning to be there. We've invited the U.S. Department of Interior, the Park Service, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the Forestry. All of those folks are going to be there because they want to recruit our young people into various jobs that are open. And the launch is from being a lifeguard. The discipline that's required to be a lifeguard, the seriousness about job responsibility comes from being a lifeguard. Work ethic comes from being a lifeguard. So all of these people, particularly the state of Ohio Department of Natural Resources, begging me, Kevin, can you get young people ready to work for us? First, they want them at their pools, at the resorts that they serve at. Then they, the plan is to, we don't have lake lifeguards with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources anymore because they can't find them. Then after two years of seasonal service, guess what? They can lateral into a state job. There's a career path for them. So I want to thank you all for helping us to make this possible. I really, really do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep working with the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Public response? Okay, we'll go out of order like we normally do. We're usually confused. And one of my favorite people, Bill Whitaker, is in charge of our developmental disabilities. And March coming up is Developmental Disabilities Month. And Bill does an amazing job. He has weathered the storm through all the changes over the past five years that have devastated really how developmental disabilities works in the state of Ohio. And if you ask this board up here, it hasn't been a positive change. You know, so we react to the circumstances around us and do the best we can. And Bill has done an amazing job, you know, on behalf of so many people. So we're really proud to be able to present a resolution on behalf of developmental disabilities to Bill Whitaker. Bill, you want to come over?
Do you want to say a few words first?
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you again, commissioners, for inviting me down to recognize Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. We've been doing this year over year. And I know we maybe had to do it remote a year or so, you know, through COVID. But, you know, your support and the community's support means so much to us. You know, on behalf of the fifteen hundred, over fifteen hundred individuals and families we serve now. When I came here in two thousand and fourteen, we were serving a little over eleven hundred people. So that's quite an increase, you know, in eight, almost nine years. And largely, a lot of that is due to reintroduction of our early intervention program. As you know, we were one of two county boards in the entire state of Ohio that were not providing early intervention services to children zero to age three. Now we serve over five hundred a year on average. And at any given time, over two hundred and fifty children are in what they call individual family service plans. So that means we're actively serving over two hundred and fifty kids in that age range at any time. Kids cycle in and out due to ages, and that's why we serve nearly five hundred kids in a year. You know, some exciting news for us. As you know, through gracious support that you've helped provide in the community, we're going to be hopefully breaking ground on our new playground at Leonard Kurt School this spring. We're finishing up plans. We're a little bit different than most schools. As you know, we serve kids from age five through age twenty-two. Most playgrounds are built for kids up to about sixth grade. So we've been working with a company to try and develop things for some of our older students that they can enjoy on the playground. And we're in the final process of doing that. Gina and the staff at the school have done a wonderful job with focus groups, interacting with some OT and PT staff as to what we can bring for our students that will be beneficial not only in play, but also might be therapeutic at the same time, without them realizing that they're kind of engaging in therapy while they're playing. So we're looking forward to that. And, you know, I can't thank the community again enough who's, we've gotten, I mean, we're close to two hundred thousand dollars in donations from the community. And then with your gracious support of the fifty thousand dollars. And then also, it's not finalized yet, but you're going to be hearing more about this soon because technically it is your property, so we'll have to come to you. We have a couple of companies and I think the local trade association, they're looking to pave a new basketball court for us out in the, out back behind Leonard Kurt School. So more of that to come. We're working with the prosecutor's office on how we can accept that gift because it's obviously a pretty large gift that someone will be giving us. And then you'll probably see a resolution coming to you at some point as we do that, so. You know, as Commissioner Ditzler said, we've been through some tremendous changes over the last five years. It really started maybe a little before that with the closure of YDC and all of those things that happened back in two thousand and fifteen, the announcement. But yes, I mean, finally, actually, we just completed the first year of our final transition of our last building at Javits. As you know, we turned our last adult services building over to Active Day Services in the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. They finished their first year. Happy to report, you know, our other service providers that have taken over, that were mandated, they're doing a nice job. You know, we worked through things with all them, but all of our partners that we work with, you know, with Masco, Active Day, you know, Jimmy Sutman through all of his programs with Purple Cat and Kathy Phillips and the Carousel Center, all of our other providers do a great job. It's just a different way of doing things now. As you said, maybe not the best of changes, but we got to do, we got to do what they tell us to do. But again, without your support, we couldn't do all the wonderful things that we do for our individuals and families. And there's more changes coming, hopefully for the positive. You know, those people that are doing that work out there every day with the people that were, you know, charged with serving. For, quite frankly, the wages are very low for those people. And we've, we have a workforce crisis. And the governor and his as-introduced budget proposes sixteen and a half percent increase in the Medicaid waiver rates, with all of that being state-funded, at least in the biennium. Now, I know through negotiations, through state legislators, we're going to be asked as local county boards to contribute to that. But we need to do that because we're at the point now where providers are having to turn people away because they can't find staff, because people can go to Walmart and make more than they can. You know, maybe having to provide a specialized diet for somebody that could choke if they don't do it correctly. So that level of responsibility compared to level of responsibility, maybe like retail, is not the same, you know, not that one job compares. But you have to pay people appropriately to what they're doing. And I do appreciate the governor's investment from the state. But I do know that locally, we'll probably bring some dollars to the table for that as well. And your support always helps us do that by, you know, putting our levels on the balance. So just again, I want to say thank you and appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
How do you want to get back out in the hall and take the picture? Get any further away?
Take a picture just over your nose on this camera.
Thanks.
What do you want?
No.
Did you say, Bill, that the trades were going to do what? I'm looking at all these gentlemen here.
So the Trades Association, we got a letter from them. And I know Shelley and Sam's, this is one of the companies that's going to look to do the paving and then their pipe works is maybe going to donate something. So we had an area that has a concrete pad where an old pavilion was that we needed to take down. And I, this actually came through the operator, through Carmen Pompey, if you know who he is. Incredible person who, he actually went out and solicited these donations for us and through his connections with people made this possible. So I should, I need to thank him publicly as well for all that he's done for us.
I'll tell you, we have the best group of tradesmen in the state, in this valley. You know, they do a phenomenal job and, and, you know, it only takes a phone call for them to help people. You know, they do so much for free that people don't know and people don't realize. You know, when they, when you talk labor, you know, it's a, it's a very positive reaction, you know, in this county and in this valley because they do a great job and they do so much that goes unnoticed. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number six, Thursday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Advertisement forbid, sanitary. Patrick?
Morning, everybody. Item number one is the Midlothian Glenwood Area Sanitary Sure Rehabilitation Project. It's improvement number five forty.
Thanks, Pat. Motion for advertisement forbids.
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entry is number one. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Travels, O M B grants.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a travel for the year for me and Jody to attend development meetings, special projects, C D G, seminars, conferences, all within the state of Ohio.
Oh, one-way tickets as well, right?
Righto. Well, I want out of Ohio, so. Estimated at three thousand dollars.
All right, thanks, Hannah. Motion to approve travels, O M B grants A.
Approval of two-way travels.
Second.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Agreements, auditors. Stacy?
Item A is the agreement with the auditor state for our annual financial statement audit for ending fiscal year just two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of one thirty-five, one thirty-six, and that would be general fund.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, microfilm, Jess.
Good morning, commissioners. This is the third and final addendum to our agreement with Lake Business Products. This is going to help finish up what we started in Boardman Court. There's been some construction they've been doing out there and they had to get rid of some extra files. So our agreement would have ended at the end of this month. This will extend it two more months so we can get the project finished.
Nice, okay. Convention and visitors, Lunda.
Good morning, everyone. Letter C is an agreement with ADRAK for literature distribution of our travel guide along the travel information centers on Ohio's interstates, as well as a northeast Ohio route. And this, the total is three thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars, non-general.
Thank you. Lead based.
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with Best Western in Boardman for relocation of our clients over a two-year period by per-unit pricing, that took Steve fifty thousand.
And recycling.
Morning, commissioners. Item E is our agreements with Milton Springfield and Villable Lloyd for drop-off site lease agreements. And these amounts handle not only the lease, but some incidentals like paving, putting down salt, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Lou. Motion for advertisement, agreements, I'm sorry.
Approval of three A, agreements A through E.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. All right, resolutions. Additions, motion.
Approval of resolutions, number one additions.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, and resolution of award. You know, Patrick O'Shaughnessy, you know, now that your St. Patrick's Day is coming up and you get to celebrate the Irishman that you are, this is, you know, a big award of a bid, you know, for us. You know, meaning that it's the, I believe the first one will pass with respect to the sales tax that you worked so very hard to promote and get passed. And we're able to sign this on behalf of the community to move forward with paving. And I know that, you know, Anthony and Carol and myself, you know, we're are very proud and very happy that this is moving forward and that the residents of Mahoney County embraced the thought of trying to do more roads. You know, you did a great job yesterday at the township meeting showing everything that has been done over the past ten years. And, you know, we all complain about potholes in roads, but there's never been a time where more roads have been done in Mahoney County over the last ten years collectively, in the history of Mahoney County, I want to say. So this is another step forward in trying to combat all the, you know, need for maintenance when we're able to be proactive with, you know, repairing roads. So if I took your esteem, I'm sorry, but I wanted to make sure that everyone realized that this is something that we've all worked very hard for. And no one worked harder than you did on this, Pat, so.
Thank you, commissioners, and I have plenty of steam, don't worry. So letter A is the award of our two thousand and twenty-two OPWC Road and Safety Upgrade Program. And as you mentioned, our first of the two thousand and twenty-three sales tax resurfacing. Low bidder was Lindy Paving in the amount of six million eight hundred forty-two thousand fifty-three dollars, ten cents. This is non-general, low bid, thirty-five percent OPWC.
Wow. That's great. See, the, you know, I know that the prices keep going up with respect to us on what we anticipated being able to do, but getting thirty-five percent of it, you know, subsidized is a big help.
Yeah, this, again, the material costs in the construction world are certainly much higher than we would have liked. But, you know, this is still a very large program and it's going to touch every township and multiple municipalities as well because we have several bridges connected to this project. And it's going to be, you know, a lot of work in the first year. Again, we were hoping it was going to be a little bit larger, but, you know, the asphalt prices and trucking costs are kind of dictating where we're going right now. But it's still much larger than what we can do. And if you recall, yesterday I showed a slide of what we would do if we didn't have the sales tax versus what we're able to do with our OPWC and the sales tax. So parlaying our sales tax money with grants certainly stretches the dollar much farther and enables us to do more than we could ever have done. So again, I want to thank everybody that supported this and, you know, believed in us. And we're going to start showing them where, you know, where the money's going.
Absolutely. And Pat, if you could send your presentation over as well. You know, I want to make sure that people realize the one thing that is important is, you know, you're funded through gas tax and license plate fees. And the gas tax that is such, you know, a thorn in my side is that eighty-eight counties split it evenly from the state of Ohio. And we have five hundred and ten miles of county roads, I believe, and Columbiana County has eighty-five. And they get the same amount as we do. And you, you would think that they would do it by registered motor vehicles or by road miles. You know, it's, it only makes the most sense. You know, you don't need to pave eighty-five miles roads over and over again when we can't even get through our first eighty-five in eight years, so.
Let me ask a question. Pat, did they ever bring up anything at your engineering meetings in Columbus about how are they going to tax electric cars? The, how are you going to get money if down the road more people start, you know, buying electric?
Actually, ODOT has out on their website, I believe it's like a survey or an online survey asking residents of the state of Ohio what their thoughts are on that. Because currently, there is no alternative funding. You know, so as the, as the vehicles become more fuel efficient and they move towards hybrids or electric vehicles, the gas tax collections are going to continually decrease. And, you know, the, you know, Dave brings up the, you know, good point of how the gas tax is divided evenly amongst all eighty-eight counties. You know, for us, it's about a third of our budget. For other counties, it's, you know, seventy percent of their budget. So it's going to be a tremendous impact, not to mention it impacts the state of Ohio, the townships, the cities, you know, all of us are going to feel that as that gas tax continues to decrease. So I believe the state legislature is trying to come up with some solutions, but it's probably going to take a little bit of time. And I'm not quite sure what the, what the answer is going to be when things do convert to more electric or more hybrid-type vehicles.
You think you could send us a copy or send us that link to our office?
Yep. Yeah, and actually, ODOT brought that up yesterday in the township presentation that they, they have something on their website, you know, again, asking the citizens to weigh in on.
Yeah, Pat, we felt, when I was trustee in Austintown, we had the same battle. And we actually filed a lawsuit, you know, that stated, you know, there's twelve hundred or thirteen hundred townships. Austintown had a hundred and fifteen miles of township roads and Ellsworth had three. And we both were allocated the same amount of money, so.
One thing I found interesting yesterday was, and not knocking any agencies or saying we're bigger or better or better, but ODOT mentioned they have seven hundred and twenty-eight lane miles in Mahoney County. We have approximately fourteen hundred lane miles. They have about a thousand culverts, we have well over three thousand. So when it comes to maintenance, Mahoney County Engineers Office maintains more roadways and more culverts than the Mahoney County branch of ODOT, of the District Four County Office. So I really didn't realize that in the past because you think of ODOT with I-680, two-twenty-four, you know, five-thirty-four, the big state routes, they're multi-lane, high-speed limit. Didn't realize how much more mileage we have. We have the same amount of trucks on the road. They have twenty trucks, we have twenty trucks. So it kind of puts things into perspective on, you know, our uphill battles. But we do have a phenomenal relationship with ODOT and they do support us, especially the Canfield outpost.
You have a great work staff up there. You have a great group of men and women that work in your department.
Thank you, Carol.
I mean, you really do. And I'm not going to say that, well, I will say this. You maintain your roads in the county, our roads in the county, way better than some other areas.
Well, thank you. It's a noticeable change, you know, in ten years, it's a noticeable change that things are working and going well. And I'll say it every time, it's not perfect and we're not finished. But the, you know, the staff has really embraced some of the changes that I've brought. And, you know, I've embraced some of the changes that they've brought up and things seem to be working pretty well right now. But, you know, we'll continue to fight and hopefully, you know, make our community better each year.
Well, Dave, I'm going to get industrial road done.
I'll call you later, Pat.
There you go. And he's writing everything down, too. He's writing it all down. You better bring a bottle of booze when you go.
The other, the other complaint I made yesterday at the meeting, Pat, that, you know, I'm sure that they weren't real happy with is the way ODOT cuts grass at the exit ramps coming off Route Eleven. I told them that, that when I get off of Polaris in Columbus, it looks like the Kensington Golf Course. When I get off on Eleven in Austintown, I've got to pull into Mahoney Avenue to keep from getting creamed or by a car because I can't see past the three feet high of grass. And, and they told me that special groups sponsor the grass cutting in Columbus. So I'd like, you know, them to tell us who that is, Pat. Do they got the employees from Macy's at Polaris out there with their lawnmowers at lunchtime? Cutting the grass?
In actuality, Dave, I think what it is, is a lot of people don't know this, but when Polaris was built, it was fully funded by the developer. I think Glimpsher paid for the entire project at that time. And this was in the, I believe, the mid-nineties. So I'm sure some sort of agreement was, was struck then on, on maintenance because, you know, what the state would typically do versus what a private developer wants to, you know, attract businesses and people are two different things. So I think that's been in place probably close to thirty years now.
Yeah, I only use Polaris as an example, people know that. But, you know, I probably could take you to a hundred places in the state that aren't, that aren't cared for, that are cared for better than we are in Mahoney County. So just a pet peeve I have against them, so. All right, thank you very much, Pat.
One of many.
I hear you. All right, a motion to approve resolution of award.
Motion to approve number two, resolution of awards A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions, engineers, Pat.
Commissioners, letter A is a resolution approving moral obligation payment of two thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars to call-in equipment. This was for emergency repairs to our fuel pump gauge at our District Two location, which is the North Lima outpost.
Thanks, Pat. Facilities, Alan.
Good morning, commissioners. B is the resolution improving the appointment of one account clerk for the department.
Thank you. Thank you. Jobs and family, Audrey, there you are. You're hiding up in a corner, Audrey.
Not you, Pat.
What did he say? You can hear me, right?
Yeah, now we can, thank you.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Audrey, Nancy, and Jim. Letter C, job and family service resolution approving unpaid leave of absence for one employee beginning February seventh, 2023. Thanks.
Thank you, Audrey. Sheriff's Department, Joe.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
D is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of eight thousand three thirty-six to Pet Bits Associates LLC for the emergency veterinary surgery on our K-9 family.
Is he okay?
He is now.
Okay, motion to approve resolutions.
Motion approved number three, resolutions A through D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, all right. Any, Audrey, have anything for the good of the order, department heads or like this? Audrey?
I just want to give my condolences to Commissioner Trafficante for his mom. We all know how precious our moms are to us, and I know how precious she was to him. I know he would have wanted to be here, as David said, in regards to the first allocation of the sales tax. But family comes first. And I know that he's there with his sister, and so I asked everyone to keep them in their prayers because I know he's got a rough road to go over the next couple of weeks.
I just want to give Anthony and Jackie condolences from my family to his and from all of our workforce for the passing of his mother.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's always a difficult time.
Mothers are a tough deal.
You know, especially when it's parents or siblings and family, close family. And God bless Mrs. Trafficante, and, and God bless Anthony as he deals with, you know, something that, you know, is extremely difficult times, so. Okay, that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.